We have a meeting to order. Anyone's recording, let us know. Thank you. A couple of continuances. Ken, on the public hearing, was that posted for tonight, advertised for tonight and needs to be continued? Or is it advertised for January 11th?
It's advertised for January 11th.
Okay. So that will be the definitive plan for Shell Wayne. The next two continued public hearings for Borrego, 140 Tyonet Road and 150 Tyonet Road is continued to December 28th. If the board wishes to meet on December 28th, what's your, how do you feel about that?
I'm all right. I'm in town.
No problem.
Okay.
I can do it too.
Very good. Thanks. So we will have our regular meeting on the 28th. And the only other business I have is the Clemmie Property Special Permit Compliance. I don't know if anybody, oh, there's Richard. I don't know if there's anybody here representing them or wishing to speak to us on that point.
Bill Clemmie was requesting this date to talk to the board about the compliance. I also invited Dave Requena to discuss the compliance from his office as well.
Doesn't sound like we got anybody on board. You seen anyone? Oh, there's a beep.
Building Commissioner's here.
Who's that again?
Dave Requena.
Building Commissioner Dave Requena.
Oh, hi Dave.
How you doing?
Good, good. Any of the, do you have a progress report of?
So, so I have not had a chance to inspect that property yet. Kind of just getting into this. So I'm not sure how far they've come along. Bill Clemmie did tell me he was going to be on this call today.
Maybe he thought it was further in the our agenda. We kind of blew through the agenda rather quickly, so.
I informed him today that it was at six o'clock and, and he had the link and confirmed to me that, that he understood it was at six.
Hi Charlie.
Hi, just on the line.
Yeah, I was just, I don't know if you have a copy of the agenda. Charlie Rowley just signed in.
Yeah, I see that Borrego was postponed.
Correct, so we got Dave Requena on the line to talk about the Clemmie situation. I don't know if board members have any questions for Dave?
I'm just, I'm just curious where, where it stands and does he understand that? You know, from my point of view, that we should be imposing, or Dave should be imposing some sort of a fine for non-compliance? This has been going on for better part of two years. What's that?
We set May 15th as a
That was, I, I believe that was for the seeding. Cause we, we gave him a pass on the seeding because of the time of the year, we knew it wasn't going to germinate. But that's really doesn't have any impact on the trailers that are on the property illegally. He could easily comply with that and then show good faith.
So I, I did have a conversation with Mr. Clemmie regarding his trailers. And he informed me that he had, that he had active trailer plates and farm plates that he was going to put on those trailers, which, which would, it would impair my enforcement ability if that was the case.
Do you think it's unreasonable of us to put up it, it, some sort of a date? Drop dead date on the plates being on, on the trailers and copies of the registrations forwarded to the board? I mean, if they're registered, you're right, there's really nothing we can do about it.
Right, but that, that would be up to you as a board. And I speak to the board through you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I, I, I'd hate to give advice to the board in, in a situation like this. I don't, I don't, you know, I, I don't have any strong feeling one way or the other. I mean, if, if the board feels they want to put a deadline on it, then, then that would be up to you.
Can I make a comment? Dave, this is Richard Swenson. How are you?
Good Rich, how are you?
Good, good. I don't understand the, the caveat about him having plates on that. He took all those trees down illegally. He got a special permit after the fact and he was supposed to restore that property to its natural condition. That was over two years ago and he's done nothing. I don't think restoring it to a natural condition includes having both trailers on there regardless if they got plates on them or not. If he's, if we're going to let him skate until next spring to do the reseeding, we certainly, my expectation is that he's going to re, those trailers can't be there when he reseeds.
I, I would rather not comment on that, Rich. It's
I, I think realistically, we never considered packing vehicles there when we set the conditions. I think he's got to go by the town bylaw that says not more than one unregistered vehicle on the property.
From an enforcement standpoint, it's, all right, from, from a enforcement standpoint, it's still private property. He can keep his trailers there, as far as I'm concerned. If they're unregistered, it's a violation. If they are registered, it's not a violation. It's, it's, you know, I, I can't go after someone for having registered trailers on their private property. If it meets the bylaw, I can enforce against it.
I guess, Ken Buckland, I, I have not been, I have not had the opportunity to read the special permit that was granted, Mr. Clemmie. Post, in post his taking all trees down and clearing that land. But I have to believe that being able to park registered trailers on that is not part of it.
I think it's silent.
It's outside of the scope.
The special permit was issued for clearing of the property. It did not identify the use of the property. All was, all it was regarding was the land clearing and grading. And so you had approved a special permit with conditions that specified the removal of stumps, the disposal of stumps offsite, finished grades within six inches of existing grades. When the weather and ground types are appropriate for vegetative growth, a mix of seeds spread as ground cover. And repair and maintenance of existing sediment erosion controls as required or needed. And damage or disturbance to the travel ways to be repaired immediately. That was the, the special permit that was issued. It did not specify the use of the property. Use of the property is allowed under the zoning district that applies to the property.
And my, my opinion is at the very least, he should be complying with the zoning bylaw concerning the unregistered trailers and get them registered.
He had offered that he was going to remove the, the trailers when I asked him whether or not they were registered.
But just listening to Dave, he, Dave's got different information, so which is accurate.
The newer information that Dave received is the current information.
So the way I, the way I read it is, is that he has no intentions of removing the trailers. So at the very least, he should comply with zoning and, and get them registered.
How many are allowed by the zoning bylaw? After they're registered, just one?
No, no, only one unregistered. We don't, we don't classify how many, how many registered vehicles you can have in your property.
Okay.
So, so then he would have to register two of the trailers to comply.
That's correct.
I think considering the history, the past two years of basically doing nothing to, to the property as indicated in the special permit, I, I don't think it's unreasonable of us to insist that he register those two trailers. At least then
He needs to provide proof to, to Dave that they are registered. Proper amount of them are registered.
Right.
If not, then Dave has a violation.
Cause he, he has a farm plate, right?
I think that was mentioned, yes.
If he has a farm plate, a farm plate's a blanket type. It's like a repair plate. He can have 10 registered, unregistered trailers there. You can obviously use them for his farm use. And I think, in my opinion, that makes this a issue, you know.
So he could produce a, a, an active farm plate and say, here's my registration and it covers all three trailers?
Yes.
You don't, you don't
That's the reason they have a farm plate.
No, I, I, Mr. Chairman, Dave Requena, I, I, I would not agree with that. Each trailer would have to have their own plate. Each plate only covers one, one vehicle at a time. You can have a farm plate, but it's only active for the vehicle that it's attached to at that moment. If it's attached to one vehicle, it doesn't assume registration on five other vehicles or two or three. So my take on it is he would have to register two of those three trailers. Two of those trailers would have to have an active plate on it to cure the violation.
And correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, I've had trailers with plates on them forever. A trailer location costs nothing. I mean, you, you can, cause you're not buying insurance on the trailer. The trailer is only insured when it's connected to a vehicle. So he could register and put a plate on those trailers for probably under a hundred dollars. So again, I don't, I don't think it's unreasonable on our part to, to ask him to show some good faith. I mean, we're going to be three years into this project by the time he puts seed down, assuming he does it.
Is that a question or I mean?
No, that's, that's my, that's my statement. I'm waiting for someone from the board to, to comment on whether I'm being unreasonable.
I think we should put a deadline on it, make them register them. And go from there again.
No, like I said, he demonstrates that they're registered or, or it's an enforcement issue.
So what's a reasonable deadline? I mean, I know.
Thirty days should be plenty.
Well, if he's got an insurance agent, which I'm sure he does, I just had to, to transfer title of that little black Dodge that I had that my son was driving. Gifted it to him so that he could have it on base at the naval station. And from start to finish, I had plates and a registration in my hand in two days. All, all done remote.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
I'm, I'm not here to give you guys legal advice, but the, as far as I'm concerned, the trailers on the property are outside of the scope of this approval. They are an enforcement issue under the zoning enforcement officer and the Board of Appeals. They are not within the scope of this special permit. And I don't think you have the authority to put a deadline as to when he, he has to have those trailers registered. It's outside of, it's outside of the scope and I believe it's, it's outside of the board's authority.
Whose authority would it be then, Dave?
It's under my authority.
So what are you going to, what deadline are you going to put on it?
I'm just getting into this. So who's speaking? Is that Richard?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're two years into this, Dave. That's what's driving. And we got reamed pretty good a month ago by the neighbors out there for our lack of inaction.
Understood. Understood, Richard, but that doesn't mean that you can, that, that you can act on something that's outside of your authority. As a board, it's not within the scope of this appro, okay, so if it's outside of the scope of this approval, well then, if a complaint comes into my office, I don't have a written complaint about the trailers in my office. I can tell you that right now. So it, it was brought to me verbally, but if a written complaint comes to my desk, I'll act on it. I've had conversations with, with Mr. Clemmie about this already. I, I, I will act on it like any other zoning enforcement action. And if he doesn't comply within the time ID necessary, he'll have to go in front of the zoning board of appeals. But it is a zoning violation and, and again, it's outside of the scope of this approval.
That, that's fine. And I appreciate very much you outlining the legalese around this so we can do it the right way. So if this planning board sent you a letter, would that be appropriate?
Yes, it would.
So anybody else on the board feel that that's not the right way to go at this point?
No, I, I think that's the only plan of action we have available. We might as well follow it.
Yeah, I, I agree.
At, at least that way, if the neighbors show up at a meeting and read us the riot act again, we have, we have something in motion. It's, we're not sitting on our hands ignoring it.
That sounds good.
Yep, I agree.
Yeah. It, it, and it doesn't have to be anything extravagant. It can just be a written letter, anything like that. And then I will be in contact again with Mr. Clemmie and, and will, will determine what a suitable course of action is. And if he doesn't comply with that, then I'll have to refer him to the Board of Appeals and, and then enforcement action will ensue after that if he doesn't comply.
So George, how about I, I draft a letter, I'll distribute it to all the board members for comment and make necessary edits based on those comments and then we'll send it off to Dave.
Sounds like a plan.
Yeah. All right, I'll take, I'll take that one.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Chairman? On October 28th, a letter was sent to Bill Clemmie with the copies to the planning board and the building office regarding 23rd Just Point Road. Said that the planning board voted at the regular meeting on, of October 26th, to set a deadline of May 15th, 2021, for you to have completed the property restoration specified by the special permit conditions as issued in January 2019. This vote also extends the time the special permit is available to be acted on for another year. The board asked for a fine graded lot with four inches of topsoil placed on the graded surface and seeded with grass. Seeds are to be at least terminated by that date. More immediately, the building commissioner was informed that you have acknowledged having more than one red, unregistered trailer on the subject lot and that you are moving them because there's otherwise an ongoing violation of the zoning bylaw. If you have any questions regarding your responsibilities, please contact this office. Would you like to have that letter reinstated?
What does reinstate mean?
Confirm the vote that you took on October 26th.
So he's, he's technically already acknowledged the fact, or he's been notified by letter and, and the building inspector has been notified by the same letter of the, with the violation. So we wouldn't really need to draft a new letter then, right?
Unless you want to say something different.
This is not regarding the, the enforcement of what, what he's in violation of in his approval. What we were discussing were the extra trailers.
Ken just read that letter out loud and it, and it addressed
Excuse me, this is Bill Clemmie. I'm in attendance right now. Are you talking about our issue or are you talking about something else?
No, your property, sir.
Oh, I thought we were later on in the agenda. That's why I didn't join in at six o'clock.
Well, the agenda went a little quickly, so.
That's pretty quick, 15 minutes.
Postponement. Just to catch you up, you're advised, advised by the zoning enforcement officer that you have registrations for these trailers?
The trailers are used with a dealer plate that we have a registration for, yes. Whenever we use your trailer, we put a dealer plate on it and the dealer plate has a registration. It's registration number 278.
I don't think that meets the intent of the bylaw, but again, that's an enforcement issue with the
In my discussion, in my discussion with Dave
Zoning enforcement officer and not part of your special permit?
That is a separate issue as far as I'm concerned. And when I spoke with Dave, I thought Dave said he was going to be on the meeting.
He is.
I don't see his name here. He said that he was going to investigate it and we would have a follow-up discussion about the trailers, my, him and I. So I have no issue with dealing with Dave on what has to be done to address that issue on the trailers. There's only two trailers on site as of today, just so everybody knows. And those two trailers, one of them will probably be moved shortly anyway, but I will follow up with Dave in regards to keeping the trailers there. That's what he told me he wanted to do.
Good, thank you. Now you're, you'd asked to, to address us regarding the compliance with the special permit, is that correct?
David told me when I spoke to me the other day that he also wanted to look into the, the special permit conditions and the, the whole special permit that was issued. And he wanted to, he had, had a discussion with Ken Buckland and he wanted to follow up and get a more, look at the actual special permit. And he would follow up with me on what his, what his thoughts were and we would go from there.
Yep, so I'm here, Bill. I, I have read through the special permit. And I, I have not been able to make a site visit yet. But any, any items on that list that are not completed would be under the purview of enforcement at this point.
Okay, that's what we discussed the other day and we, I think we had gone through most of all of the conditions and there's only, the, the one condition that the board has referenced before you wanted to look into and we were going, we were going to meet, yourself and I were going to meet back on site and, and you could look at the site and we could look at the conditions and we would come to an agreement.
I don't know what agreement you're looking for outside of the special permit, but right now it's been, you've been given another reprieve by extending the conditions to May 15th.
Well, George, if you don't, if you want to just review this briefly, my, my first concern, to be honest, is that there were, the, the planning board, your board held a meeting about two months ago and you had a discussion about this. And I know Ken had told me you were going to have a discussion about it on the day of the meeting. Unfortunately, we weren't able to attend on such short notice. So it would have been nice to have had this discussion at the meeting the first time or just waited for us to have the meeting, which is fine. But in going through all of the special permit itself and where we stand, I mean, it really comes down to, item number six on the conditions, it talks about grading and putting down ground cover and making sure that the site has enough coverage and such. And all of the other conditions, I think I've gone through Ken, with Ken before. And every other condition and finding that was in there has been, has been met in regards to special permit. I wanted to point out that when we got the special permit, when we were in the hearings and there was a lot of discussion about what we were going to do and how we were going to remove the stumps and, and all that, the board explicitly told us, do not do any grading on the site. Go in, remove the stumps, fill the holes in and disturb as little as you can because you didn't want dust and debris and you didn't want to impact the topography and leave it the way it was. So when we removed the stumps, that's exactly what we did. Topography is the same. There's, there's no reference in the special permit about a fine graded lot that's now been requested in the subsequent letter that we received. The lot had and still has varying topographies from 12 to 20 feet that are shown on the plan. And the idea that somebody decided that we should have four inches of topsoil brought into the site without an understanding of how much, where, when and why. It's a five acre site and four inches of topsoil would be 1,300 yards of, of topsoil. That would be, you'd need a bulldozer to put it down. You'd disturb all of the growth that we have. And you'd be back to ground zero hoping that you can grow some additional grass as opposed to the 80% coverage that we have now on areas that are coastal area that has sand as its base. Now, I'm no wetlands expert. I'm no conservation expert. I have had discussions with a conservation agent about the conditions of the site. And he didn't, he hasn't seemed to have any issue with it. We have done three plantings on this site, two in 2020, when as you all are aware, there was a, a drought issue. There was a, there was a drought called for by the, by the State Department, US Drought Monitoring Report on September 17th. Wayham was in an extreme drought for most of the summer and most of the winter, but we still tried to plant as best we could. And we do have great coverage on 80% of that lot. So, you know, the, I, we have no problem meeting with Dave and going over where we stand now. But we think that the site has met the conditions of the special permit. We've done everything we can to grow as much as we can and it has, it has good coverage. It has no better and no worse coverage than other projects that have been done in the area. To be honest, if you go and look at the Buzzards Bay Coalition's project they did a thousand feet away, when they did their clearing and such, they have the same thing. There's, there's some areas that are sandy because it's sandy soil. There's no shade to protect it to have anything grow under it because that's what was always there. So at this point, I'm glad Dave's involved. He's the enforcement officer. We will work with Dave to come to a resolution. And if, if he thinks that there's a couple of things that we need to do, we'll, we'll have that discussion. But you know, looking at the special permit as it was written, as it was agreed to, after the discussions that we had had, we, we feel that the special permit has, has been met. And we're going to meet with the enforcement officer and review it again. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, Dave Requena. Bill, Bill, in this case with, with all the land, I can only report to the board what I see. It's up to them to decide whether, whether you've met all the conditions of their approval. And if they, if, if they still decide that, that those conditions have not been met and they, and they request enforcement, then that's the action I'll have to take.
I understand that. And I'm, so that's why I wanted to have the discussion today and that's why I just presented my, my, my statements to the board. Because when, the last time they met and they had the discussion about it, I wasn't given that opportunity to answer questions or review the data or review the process with them. So if any of the members have questions for me or they have information that they'd like to share, I'm more than willing to listen.
I think the thing to do right now, Bill, this is Richard Swenson, is, is to let Dave do his site visit. He's read the special permit. He can take a look and make a judgment on his, and, and report back to this board as to whether or not the conditions have been met. I've been to the site. I don't think they have been met. But that's up to David and he's going to be the enforcement officer. He is the enforcement officer. And we're going to let him take the lead on it. So that's next step for him to do a site visit. So that's the next step for him to do a site visit and have, get his opinion on how well the special permit has been complied with. Mike, does that sound right to you?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, well, like I said, we're going to meet with Dave. Richard, I can't remember, were you on the board when, when the special permit was issued?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so you, did you go back and listen to any of the conversations that we had with the board?
No.
When we had the special permit hearings?
No.
Because a lot of the stuff that I think, you know, had we gone in and completely leveled the site and made it ready for houses or whatever, then yeah, we could have, we could have, we could have brought in the loom and seeded and gotten it ready for house lots. But that wasn't the intent of the special permit at the time because we hadn't determined whether or not we were going to do three house lots, one house lots, or just, you know, figure out what we were going to do next. So because it was not for a subdivision or whatever, and there was no definitive house lots laid out, we couldn't go in and, and the board was explicit about that. They didn't want us doing extensive grading because they didn't want the problems with the, the, you know, the dust and all that and noings. And then, you know, having it leveled so it may run the wrong way. Because right now that whole site kind of has a valley in the middle. So 90% of the water stays on the site. But, but those are the things I have to, you know, that you have. Go back and look at those meetings, those are some of the things that, that you might want to understand. But that's fine. Like I said, we're willing to work with Dave. We've worked with Dave before and resolved other issues. And we're, we're, we can move forward and see what Dave has to say and go from there.
Good.
Okay.
I will try to get out there tomorrow, Mr. Chairman and the board. So I'll, I'll try giving you a call tomorrow, Bill. And maybe if Ken has some time available, maybe he can come for a ride with me and we can go check it out and see where we stand.
I would like to be there when you're there, though. I would like to coordinate that. I can be there tomorrow if you'd like. If you guys are going to be taking a ride out, I could take a ride down and meet you there. I don't have a problem with that, I just need to know when it would be.
I'll, I'll talk to Ken in the morning, Phil, and then we'll give you a shout and try to schedule a time.
That'd be great, Dave.
Okay.
Sounds good. Anything further? I guess I'll sit on that point for the time being unless somebody has a comment. Seeing none. We'll move on to the staff report.
All right, two things, three things I wanted to go over tonight. One was the meeting date and we've got the 28th set as a regular time. You may want to consider a, another meeting time in January as well too because we have a special town meeting coming up on January 16th and a, a comprehensive permit, chapter 40B, Littleton Drive, coming before the board of appeals. And the planning board has the option to file comments on the, on the project as part of the review of the zoning board of appeals.
Was that it, George?
What was that?
What was that, Mike? Where was that special, yeah, the 40B proposed for?
Littleton Drive.
Swiss Beach Road?
All the way down to the end?
No, kind of behind Brown Street and both the middle of, on the right-hand side in the back.
Yep, okay, I got you.
If you want, we'll get the Penrose, the developer, to make a presentation to the planning board so you get an idea of what the project entails and what's, what's being proposed as part of the development.
I'm pretty sure, I just double-checked with you that I, I distributed a, a package from Penrose to all the planning board members. Every, you should have it in your email from two or three weeks ago. It gives a, an overview of what the project's all about. I wanted to get, get you guys ahead of it as much as I could. So if anyone wants me to resend it, let me know.
Can you resend to me, please? This is Russell.
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Pretty sure I have that, Richard, I'm just double-checking.
I'll just resend it to everybody, all right? I'll just do it on the. And the special town meeting for the hospitality is now January 16th, is that what you said?
January 16th at 7:00 PM is what the warrant says right now.
Hopefully indoors.
It's scheduled for the high school, so it is indoors. And in regard to that as well, wanted to share my screen. One of the things that you have to do as a planning board is report to the special town meeting on the zoning amendment, the hospitality, recreation and entertainment overlay district. So I think what we, what I'd like to do is to have the board wrote on a date to review this. If it's the 28th, we agree to sit down and agree to a report to town meeting.
You want to do that on the 28th or do you need something by?
The 28th would be fine because you're, all you have to do is have the, the report, which you usually do at the, on the floor of town meeting. It'd be nice to have something beforehand though, so people are aware.
Yep. Everybody good with the 28th?
Yep.
Yep.
Very good.
That's it for me.
Okay. I have no correspondence. Don't have anything else on the agenda? Anything, any other comments or questions?
No, I'm good.
Then I'd look for a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
See you fighting over it.
Yeah.
Let's have a discussion.
All on paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Very good. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.